Good evening on this beautiful November evening. Roll call please.
Mayor.
President.
First Ward.
Here.
Second Ward.
Here.
Third Ward.
Here.
Fourth Ward.
Here.
Fifth Ward.
Sixth Ward.
Here.
All present except for Fifth Ward, Your Honor.
Thank you. First item please.
Whereas under the New York State Adopt a Highway Program begun in 1990, volunteer groups and organizations commit to beautifying stretches of state highways and keeping them litter-free, whereas the employees of the Miller Brewing Company join the ranks of adopt-a-highway groups and will maintain road sides along a two-mile section of Route 481 beginning at the Fulton City line and extending two miles south. Whereas Miller employees are committed to making a difference environmentally and challenge other groups and businesses to do the same, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and members of the common council hereby commend the employees of Miller Brewing Company for their commitment to adopt a highway program and hope that other groups and businesses will follow their fine example.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carried. Two please.
This is a bond resolution authorizing the issuance of $31,000 bonds for the city of Fulton, New York to pay for the cost of a new highway traffic paint machine.
This is a new paint machine that we had to buy because the old one just died and we had to have it to paint the lines on the road, among other things. And it's supposed to be state-of-the-art machine and I guess it does a pretty good job. Motion?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carried. Three please.
It's a resolution amending bond resolutions dated October 16th, 1990 and June 18th, 1991, authorizing the issuance of serial bonds of the city of Fulton, New York to pay the cost of various capital projects in and for the city of Fulton in relation to the maximum maturity of the serial bonds authorized thereby.
Jim, do you want to explain what that's all about, please?
Basically, it's just a mechanic thing. There'll be wording on the resolutions to take advantage of the law changes that were in effect last year. It's really not, it's not changing anything if going forward in the future, you should issue a bond at some point in time. We want to take advantage of the law changes there. That's going to play a role. It's a mechanics thing on the wording of those resolutions that were in 1990.
Now, these bond anticipation notes are, we're only paying the interest on these notes, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, this is one of the things that bothers me about bond anticipation notes. We have a lot of them and it amounts to a lot of money and we're paying out a lot of money in interest every year and not reducing the principal. And I'm sorry the council didn't, at least the committee working on the budget, didn't try to make some adjustment in that respect to issue long-term bonds, especially now when rates are low and they're going higher. Motion please.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carried. Four please.
Resolved, the common council hereby approves the following bills for payment: Robert Weaver, extension, New York, $1,045.74 for road sand. The above items over the $1,000 charge limit, it's budgeted, requires the council's approval.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carried. Five please.
Resolved that the proposal submitted by Shoe Roofing, an amount of $22,000 for emergency repairs to the Fulton Warren Memorial Roof is hereby accepted.
Well, isn't that going to be subject to approval by payment by our insurance company? Wasn't that, wasn't that the understanding?
Yeah, but we're not quite sure what the insurance company is going to give us on the roof.
Yeah, but I thought the agreement was that make it subject to their approval.
Okay, so if they don't?
So if they don't, then the resolution, or rather, we wouldn't
Okay.
Give them a bit.
They'd have to come back to us again, right?
Yes.
Subject to the approval of the insurance company.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carried. Six please.
Resolved that the police department is authorized and directed to conduct a traffic study at the intersection of West Fifth and Leach Street for the feasibility of installing a stop sign on Leach Street.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carried. Under discussion, item one, I believe, is referred to John Kirk for further study.
I had, everyone got a copy of the present rink schedule and Barry's comments on why he has people on different shifts, so take a look at it if you have any, any questions, you know, get back to me.
Okay, thank you, John. Item two is held until the next meeting.
We're going to move that down to executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, it was moved to executive session. Three, that was already been, oh, no, that's right, that's before the council, been suggested by the Fire and Police Commission and the recommendation of the fire chief that the fire alarm system be phased out. Anybody have any comment on that? No. Problem we have with it is that it's out of repair, there are parts of it that aren't operating, and the cost of fixing it is very high. We used to have, yeah, I'll catch you on the, one of the captains of the fire department used to maintain it and take care of it and he has said he won't do that anymore and we don't have anyone who is competent to do that, or that will do it, so we would have to hire it done. And frankly, they said he can't afford it. Chief feels that it's not used that much anyway and that fires are reported by calling on telephone. Alice?
Pardon me? How did that one work, the one that's being phased out? Those are the boxes on the post that we have that we have to get in?
Yeah. In fact, most people don't even know where they are. I couldn't tell you myself where there are any. Schools apparently can install some systems of their own. And of course, they can call in. You got a question?
We have our own self-sustaining system now for the senior building, would that be inclusive in your fire box?
I don't know, John, is that an independent system?
Fulton Housing Authority maintains that, yes.
But is it part of that system, do you know?
I believe so, yeah.
Well, that could be a problem. That's correct. They don't think so.
Nobody wants to do anything anymore.
We had talked about leaving a few boxes in the downtown area where there aren't houses and telephones readily available like there are in neighborhoods, is that still going to be the case?
I don't know, Jim, I would assume that if it's going to be phased out, it means the whole system. Maybe we ought to take this off the agenda and...
Maybe Marv could answer if he was at the commission meeting when they talked about it.
Marv?
Enlighten us on that phasing out of the fire alarm system. The system is antiquated and right now we're just band-aiding it together and I can't see this agreed amount of liability to the city if something should go wrong and Marv didn't report it to the station. I just can't see band-aiding a system together, certainly the way the economy is, financial problems the city has, I, we can't afford to buy in the system, about $180,000 to $200,000. And there are other means for these people to use it to transmit alarms into the fire department.
How about the Pathfinder courts, is that a part of the system?
How many times have these things used in the whole, all the years they've had? Have you used a lot?
More by the schools than industrial, just by anybody else. Generally, like today, we had an alarm, a B shot, and they had an explosion in an electrical box and they backed it up with a phone call and that's, that is quite often to use a telephone anyway to back it up.
Uh...
But I, the boxes were put around the city because of the lack of telephones many, many years ago. And now, in modern day times, everybody has a telephone or almost everybody has one. And the boxes that you see on the telephone poles are very seldom ever used.
Wouldn't 911 be a sort of system similar to that?
Well, I'm not sure how these boxes will work with 911. I, I'm not sure how. I think that's just to pick up a telephone and dial if you have an emergency. I don't know, is, these automatic systems in the factories and schools like that bring them through 911, I don't know how that...
Marv?
We talked about leaving some boxes downtown because of the lack of telephones, is that still the plan or to do away with all of them?
Away with all of them.
Okay.
Alice?
Those that are up by the school, when there's an electrical storm, it, sometimes it hits the box and the fire department is up there right away. Now, if you remove the boxes, suppose that electrical storm would cause a fire, that's an immediate...
Day before or another day.
Day before or another day. The system, would that affect insurance rates?
No.
No?
ISO doesn't even recognize it. It's the insurance service organization that rates the fire insurance for certain people.
Would they put more telephone booths around town? Are there not telephone booths right in downtown case? Like if a store is burning in the middle of the night or something, somebody goes by and needs the fire, there's businesses there, there's not enough to be able to get a hold of anything if there's, I mean, are there public telephones around?
There's one next to Goldberg's on the corner there.
Woolworths.
Woolworths? Oh, yeah, that's right, there's one in the parking lot back to Woolworths. And of course, there's businesses that are open late. I don't know, does the council want to study that any further or you want to take action tonight, what's your wish?
I think overall, we budgeted to phase it out and the Fire and Police Commission have looked into it and it's their recommendation to phase it out. If we're not going to fix it, we might as well, I know you have hanging on to the old wires on the poles and like that.
Well, liability issue is potentially a serious one. If somebody uses the box and it doesn't work, then of course, the city's going to be faced with a suit lawsuit. Yeah, Pete?
That's three, one of the main reasons why dentists are assuming no longer volunteer services for repairing a box was because the system is so antiquated and parts are so expensive, it takes so long to get. We were all worried that this, exactly what you just mentioned would come into effect. Some would pull a box thinking the department had been notified when in fact it didn't. On a national level, all fire alarm boxes such as we have here in the city of Fulton are being phased out due to advanced technology and telephone communications. There are a lot of businesses and even a lot of private residences now that have what's known as automatic callers. A smoke alarm goes off in the business or in the private house, it automatically dials the fire department. And so this is what we're seeing of more and more. The only problems like the young lady brought up would be a downtown district area where you probably have to make people walk by. I believe it was the box in front of Ryan's Cafe that if in fact saved the lady's life, they went into the river. So there are advantages to the call-in, but there are also periodic, like Jimmy Myers addressed, advantages to having strategic boxes located periodically throughout your downtown district.
Well, the answer is that yes, there are advantages and no, yes, there are disadvantages. I guess we have to elect which outweighs the other. The liability problem is a serious problem.
I'll make a motion to put the phase out and see what everybody wants to do.
Okay. You have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote please.
First Ward?
Yes.
Second Ward?
Yes.
Third Ward?
Yes.
Fourth Ward?
Yes.
Sixth Ward?
Yes.
Carried.
Sure. Maybe we should ask Marv if he can make a suggestion where he thinks we might locate strategic boxes. You couldn't have a, just a partial system, no?
Still got to maintain it.
Okay.
Same old system.
And maybe there's some kind of a hookup with 911 that is in the process of being installed in Swigaw County that could be utilized for that purpose. I can talk to the party in charge of that for the county and see if there's any possibility for that. Item four please on discussion.
Resolved that this council hereby allocates $200 to the Fulton Community Band to be a direct charge to promotion of tourism account.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Before we vote on that, Jim, do you want to enlighten the people what that's for?
Sure, the Fulton Community Band was started up last February, I believe. It's just members of the community in Fulton and we have some from Hannibal and Oswego and Bowlin's well, other areas, and I'm a member of it. And what we do is to play free concerts at community functions such as River Fest, Memorial Day Weekend, Farmer's Market. If we have a tree lighting ceremony, we're available for that. If anybody has anything going on, we're available. We don't get paid for it, we just do it because we like to, but we'd like to buy some music to play. And I've asked the council to allocate $200 out of the tourism account for that purpose. Now, if anybody has any musical talent, we rehearse Thursday nights at 7:30 at the high school.
I understand this money too comes from the recreation fund that the city has that the bet tax, and so it doesn't come out of the general budget and frankly, I think it's an excellent idea and I think that's great that we have a group like that that's willing to donate their time. I don't know about anybody else, but I enjoy the music. Okay. Do I understand you're abstaining, Jim?
That would be more proper, that's fine.
Okay. All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carried. I'm sorry, I forgot to ask if anybody had any comment about that, maybe it's a little late for that, but I, I would like to... Okay. And item five please.
Resolved, the Recreation Superintendent is hereby authorized to hire two skate guards at a total cost of $1,000. Be it further resolved, the City Chamberlain is hereby authorized, directed to transfer the funds from the 7140.2 playgrounds and recreation centers account to the 7266.1 ice skating rink account to cover the cost.
John, do you want to explain that, please?
What we, what we want to do is have a couple skate guards, these are part-time people, to be available during open skating, kind of control the crowds down there. We're going to be charging for open skating, so I don't think it's going to be a cost to the city. Barry has money in this budget, but they're going to collect money during open skating and then be there available to make sure that the open skating goes smoothly.
I, I think this was tried last year with volunteers and didn't work out very well because they couldn't seem to have, able to control the crowd and the danger of somebody being hurt as a result is obviously and definitely something to be concerned about in skating. So I think that this is a good idea because you're going to have people there that know how to skate and can help to control the crowd and if they can, we'll find somebody that they can. Does anybody in the audience have any comment on that? Yes? No, these are only part-time and they... I don't know, I didn't...
They were not in...
Involved at that time.
Yeah, they were not in the 1992 budget. I believe so. I know they were not in the 1992 budget and we tried it with volunteers, but now we'd rather have our own people there so we can control things.
I also believe that previous years too, I believe there wasn't any charge assessed to the skater so that there was no income from the skaters themselves. Anyone else? Motion please.
Move it.
All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carried. Council have anything further they'd like to bring up at this time before we go into executive session? Anything from the audience? Yes, dear.
But on that bond number two, the bond anticipation for the paint machine, how, how often is that machine used? Is it just in the spring or what, once, twice a year?
It was used all the summer, as soon as we got it this year and I don't think they're through yet.
Do we use it all through the...
Oh, yeah.
Because I'm wondering if it was something that you could work with like Oswego or somebody else and...
We receive money from the state to stripe our roads and maintain them, we're required to do that for money that we receive from the state to do it with, so that's kind of thing we, you know, we didn't have much of a choice in doing. Our old one just isn't capable of doing the job.
Does that include the streets coming off the arterial too? So like I, we live on a one-way street, Buffalo, and the arrows, you know, have to go like that, does that include...
I'm not privy to that, somebody in traffic would, yeah.
Because we live on a one-way street and if people don't see those arrows painted, they get over here and boy, you can't get off because they're in front of you and they're going the wrong way.
I think it does all the painting.
That's a different machine that does that, railroad crossings, crosswalks, that's a walk-behind machine. The one that, that's on the agenda is the one that's like a moon buggy that they ride down 41 or Route 3, long strips like that.
Gee, I thought that machine could do anything. Told me it was state-of-the-art, whatever that is.
I talked to Sergeant Rebiore, I think it was last week, about the possibility of another form of consolidating services, maybe hire the machine and our guys out to villages or whatever, they have striping to be done. There are problems that would go with it, but you know, if we could work something out, it's something to look into.
That's a good idea. Bring in money, I'm in favor of it. Why don't you check that out?
Okay.
Yes, hon?
There's a little problem, I think, of on West First Street and Oneida Street, where the stop, where the lights are.
West First and Skank?
Whatever. No, where the bridge is, wherever that's where, anyway, when you're coming down, heading towards the Swigaw, for West First Street, the ones coming this way have a green arrow, but there's not a do not turn on red sign. And if you don't, if you're sitting here and the light is red, you don't realize there's people coming at you that have a green arrow and you stop, there's going to be a bad one up there sometime. They should have a do not turn on red or something because if you don't know if there's a green arrow coming, you think you can go. And the light is red in both directions. I don't know if anybody has paid attention to it before, but I have, I don't usually come from a Swigaw direction, so don't understand, when I have, I thought, gee, people turning, and I've done it myself and there's people coming and if you're not on the bomb...
Yeah, that's a good idea, or good suggestion, Diana. If they're both turning at the same time and they meet, why...
No.
Yeah. Whose committee is that? Standing committee?
Should be a traffic study.
That'd be a traffic study, Police Department, Traffic Department could do it.
I think that, wouldn't that be a...
If you look into that.
Wouldn't that be a state traffic study? Because that likes...
I don't know.
Probably, because I'm trying to do one similar on the West Broadway Bridge and that's, that's a state one.
No, New York Route 3 is Broadway.
No, I mean 48.
Forty-eight. Yeah, but they don't maintain 48. They only, they're only responsible for the arterials.
Right, but I think if you're going to have a traffic study, because I think we ran into that same problem over here on an item, second, okay, I believe the state has to do the traffic study because it's a state.
Well, can you look into it?
Even though it goes through your city.
Chief, in any event, wherever the responsibility lies, please, that is a good point and that could, again, create some serious liability. Anyone else? Yes, yes.
Hi, my name is Terry Reynolds, I'm your cameraman.
Right.
I have a little good announcement to make. I've noticed a lot of the public's been viewing this program and I've been getting a lot of calls of people missing certain meetings and would like to view certain meetings. That's all I'm good, but my financials are not as good as they'd like to be. So what I've done is I've taken all my videotapes so the public can be aware and I've taken them down to Video World and we've set it up so the public may view the videotapes for free.
For free?
For free. It'll be set up the same way as their normal system. Only the videotapes for the common council meetings and town board meetings of the area will be at no cost.
I think that's very generous.
No. I just wanted to make a public service announcement.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yeah. Got any more volunteers? No, I, seriously, thanks, Terry. I think that is a very generous offer, and I hope that people take advantage of it. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn to executive... Yes, Alice?
We forgot to bring it up when you talked about the interest, money on the interest, you know, paying on the principal is just on the interest.
Yeah.
Well, is there anything we can do about that? That's the thing that's keeping the city in, really in a big hole.
Like consolidate them, you know?
Yeah, like that consolidation, well, this is what you're asking.
We talked about that during the budget meeting, want to come and imagine?
Because this is big problems. I don't see...
Well, I agree with you. We're paying a lot of money in interest, we're not reducing the principal, and interest rates are only going to go higher with...
And we're still getting bonds, I think you have to get bonds for that machine, and we don't even pay up the back bonds, we're going backwards.
After a few months President Clinton's reign, I think you're going to find the interest rates are going to climb. And that means if we then float long-term bonds to pay off all these BANs, we call them, we're going to pay a lot more money for them. And I think it should be done now, but that's up to the council.
That's something we have been, been looking into. It's not something that's been overlooked.
Yeah, but if you keep looking, John, by the time you decide to do something, it might be pretty high rate of interest. Right now, interest rates are as low as they have been many years. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn in the executive session?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor, indicate by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no? Carry it.